Welcome to our June 1st, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. If you guys will join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and Mr. Covert's going to lead us in our invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for the privilege to come before the city tonight, Lord, to make decisions on their behalf. Lord, we ask that you be with the mayor and his staff and the governor and his staff for the state of Arkansas. Lord, we ask you be with the President of the United States and his staff, Lord, and put a hedge of protection around the men and women of our armed services, Lord, and bring them home safely. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Again, welcome to our June Planning Commission meeting. I'll call this meeting to order if we can do roll call.
Howard Austin. Gary Compton. Roy Covert.
Here.
James David. Shannon Mueller.
Here.
Peyton Parker.
Here.
Kevin Parsley.
Here.
Ben Peters.
Here.
Dale Tyler.
Here.
All right. Any questions for the minutes for May?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Covert. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Mueller. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? All right. We do have some items that we will not hear this evening that have been tabled. Let's see, the first one is Butcher Gibson Construction. It's a waiver for sidewalk requirements, W-21-08. We also have a variance, Jose Herrera and Rosa Puja, B-21-45. Neither one of those will be heard this evening. And then, Patsy, there was another one that wasn't on this that's...
Some of you may have received a notification about the Parsons Family Trust property located off of Cheyenne Trail, asking for an SF3 zone. Since that rezoning request was denied at the last Planning Commission and they did not appeal to the City Council, they cannot apply for that rezoning designation again for one year unless they come before the Planning Commission and present evidence on a reason why their zoning request has been modified enough to allow it to be heard. So it's not on the agenda for tonight, and as of this date, they would have to submit the evidence for the Planning Commission to determine whether there was enough change in the rezoning request to hear it again. That information would be presented at the next Planning Commission if it's presented to the Planning Commission as a whole. So we're not going to hear that request at all tonight.
All right. Thanks, Patsy. We do have one tabled item for the last month that we will hear this evening, B-21-41, Omar Cortez Rios and Manuela Hernandez, 3934 Serena Street, variance for deviation aside setback from eight feet to five feet, presented by Omar Cortez Rios. I think we have Sun that's doing interpretation, okay? If you guys can, if you can state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, my name's Alvaro Cortez. I go by Noah. I live in 3934 Serena Street, Springdale, Arkansas, 7764.
Okay, thank you.
So, no más digas su nombre y la dirección.
Omar Cortez, 3934 Serena Street.
Thank you.
Manuela Hernandez, 3934 Serena Street, Springdale.
Thank you. So can you tell us a little bit about what the request is here?
So, first of all, it was a pleasure meeting you all. The problem that we are having with our property is that the humidity and the rain on the side of our house is just ruining our porch and our porch door. The humidity is creating moss, making my parents' room humid. It's just creating moss on the wall and as well as the door. Since it rains so much, the humidity is higher and making the problem worse. The dirt is constantly turned into mud, and the mud is clogging our side door to our backyard entrance. Our purpose is to construct a roof with gutters to help reduce the mud and moss that is destroying our backyard entrance. And we also have pictures too, if you want to see them.
And you're requesting to reduce the eight-foot side setback to five feet?
Um... My dad wants to show you a picture of what he wants to do.
Okay. Did you submit them to us already, and do we have the pictures floated?
I don't think we have them in the PowerPoint, no.
You don't?
No.
Okay. Okay. There is one picture in the PowerPoint, I mean, in the file, but you're welcome to bring them to Mr. Covert and let him look at them if you want to pass them around. How wide do you want the...
They wanted to make it eight feet from like the yard door towards the fence, and they wanted to make it 30 feet long and 11 feet high.
Okay. The problem being is the fire code will not let it be any closer than five feet.
Okay, just straight down here now, this way.
From the side property wise.
All right, thank you.
So we could not approve a variance any more than make it...
Five?
Five feet.
Okay. Let me, I will be translating.
And do you have any comments beyond that?
Over here.
Or did, oh, I lost you. Okay.
Is this the west side or the north side?
It would be...
Is it up or to the left?
It would be up.
Up, okay. Okay, that's good.
Um... As always with corner lots, we get some weird setbacks because we got two sides.
And again, the fire department doesn't support anything less than eight feet, but they're not here, and it does meet the...
Blake's here.
Blake's here. I'm sorry, Blake, you weren't here a second ago.
Blake, you want to make a comment? Can you let him come to the microphone, please, so he can make a comment?
I apologize, I literally just...
We're talking about the variance requests on 3934 Serena Street. They want to add a covering over their side door, and they want it to be within five feet?
Yeah, I mean, I can just tell you that the fire department does not support reducing side or rear setbacks.
Okay. Any at all?
At all, correct.
Okay. Okay.
So it's eight feet total?
That was the goal, but I mean, they're willing to compromise if it's, it would be 30 feet long, and they were hoping it would be eight feet, but if five feet is...
So if it's a, is there a pad that's going to be poured there, as far as the concrete pad?
They were thinking about it, but they just wanted to first put like a roof to see how that would help.
Okay. That was going to be my question, is are we looking for an eight foot for a pad, or are we looking for an eight foot as far as an overhang? Because it'll be the one that has the longest point as far as what you're asking for, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
So for example, on your house, you have an overhang on that house, it's measured to where that overhang stops.
Okay. So I quería saber como van a poner, va a ser de arriba or va a ser como de abajo?
De arriba. If the decho va a ser alto.
They were thinking more like a overhang.
Okay.
They wanted to go all the way to the fence?
They wanted to go, not all the way, but close enough. They just wanted to, because they just wanted some, enough covering so it's not so clogged up with the mud and the rain.
Yeah, and this is the clarification. It could, I mean, what you're asking for is, is the waiver here or the variance?
From eight feet to five feet is what they're, what they're asking on here.
But if five feet is, if, if that, that's fine. My mom, my parents said that's fine.
Yeah, that overhang could not go any, if we were to grant that, it could not go any further than that.
That's fine.
Okay. Staff comments?
At whatever fire department and building inspection says.
Okay. Any questions or comments in the audience? To the commission?
So this is a request to have it, the side setback go to five feet?
That's what their request is, from eight foot to five feet.
Okay.
And Blake is saying they don't support any side setback, but the minimum to meet fire code is five feet? Right.
And they're willing to go to five feet? The client is, okay.
That's why I was asking for that clarification of that overhang. It cannot go any further than that.
Well, in, in building inspection, we'll see that it doesn't exceed and go beyond the five-foot limit.
Call for the vote?
Call for the vote by Mr. Covert.
Yes.
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Let's count, as far as, one, two, three, four, five, six. Did I count that wrong?
Seven to six.
Yeah. Seven, zero on there as far as the vote. This does pass.
Okay, you need to get with the building inspection department to get a permit, and they will, they will help you get it within, not to exceed five feet on the side.
Okay.
That five-foot side setback.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next item, or actually, next section is rezoning. R-21-25 Hilton Road Real Estate LLC, west side of Hilton Road, approximately .45 miles south of Don Tyson Parkway, from A1 to SF2, presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Jason Apple with ESI. He's requesting this nine-acre tract to be zoned from A1 to SF2. And I'll answer any questions.
Staff comments?
The comprehensive land use plan indicates a low-density residential use for the area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan. Protect positive aspects of neighborhood character throughout the city. Appropriate locations for single-family and multifamily residential development. Assure adequate land allocation for residential purposes by providing lots of adequate size and encourage the development of a variety of housing types appropriate to the size and income of all households living and working in Springdale.
Any questions or comments in the audience? To the commission?
Call for the vote?
Call for the vote by Ms. Mueller.
Covert?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
It passes seven, zero.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the 22nd.
Thank you.
Next item, R-21-27 GNC Family LLC, 1710 Powell Street, from C2 to I1, presented by Matt Ahart.
Thank you, sir. My name's Matt Ahart, and I'm here with ENS Properties and the GNC family. Corporation has requested a rezone from C2 to I1 at the 1710 Powell Street in Springdale.
Can you guys turn that microphone up and the ones for the people online, so it's a little bit louder, please?
Staff comments?
The adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates lot industrial warehouses for the area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan. It's recommended for approval encourages development industries that further diversify and stabilize the city's economic base and assure adequate land allocation for industrial growth protected from encroachment by non-industrial uses.
Any questions or comments in the audience? To the commission?
Call for the vote?
Call for the vote by Mr. Covert.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
It passes seven, zero.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the 22nd.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, R-21-28 Brenda Lazenby, Barberry Court, approximately 15 acres behind 3018 East Robinson and East Butter and west of Butterfield Coach Roads, from MF12 to a P V, also from Lemonade Plaid, 2111 Barberry Court, formerly Lazenby, presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Jason Apple with ESI. Yeah, previously you saw this as a duplex subdivision with 96 lots. We've had some discussions with our client, and they would like to pursue a single-family option for the subdivision, for this piece of property. Typical lot sizes are 40 by 100. And I'll answer any other questions.
Staff comments?
The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan that indicates commercial use for the property. Protect positive aspects of neighborhood character throughout the city. Allocate locations for single and multifamily residential. Assure adequate land allocation for residential purposes. Encourage the development of a variety of housing types appropriate to all, to the size and income of households living and working in Springdale. Since this is a pud, we need to go through the details of the pud itself. It is a 15.12-acre tract, which exceeds the minimum requirement of 10 acres for a planning unit development. It is not the entire piece of property under this ownership because the commercial lots on the front are being retained and not part of this pud itself.
Correct.
The developer does not anticipate bringing any additional or other properties into the pud, and that couldn't be done unless the Planning Commission and the City Council approves that. It will be done in one phase that will start immediately after the pud approval. The walking trails and the tot lots that are included will be built during Phase One, and it would have to be because that's, there's only one phase. The developer intends to begin construction as quickly as is practical once the construction plans are approved by the appropriate regulatory entities. It shall be called the Barberry Court Plan Unit Development. It contains 85 residential, single-family residential lots.
Patsy, sorry, I think that was meant to be 87.
Eighty-seven?
Yes.
Okay. Matt, pud plan will have to be updated. Because it says 85 on my copy.
Yeah, the plaque shows 87, the development plan shows 85, so we'll update the development plan.
Okay, you'll have to make that correction.
Yes.
The developer intends to build and sell homes and the lots and/or sell lots. The lots are similar to conventional subdivisions in that they have front-loading garages accessing at public street in front of the home and a private backyard behind the house. The typical lot size is 40 by 110 to 140. The only permitted uses in this PUD will be Use Unit 1, which is citywide public uses by right; Use Unit 4, which is cultural, recreational, and health facilities; Use Unit 8, which is a single-family dwellings; and Use Unit 34, which is model home temporary marketing office. The 87 lots, then, what is the density? Is it still 5.6?
5.75.
5.75 units per acre. They have 2.4 acres allocated as green space, which calculates to 15.9%. The minimum required in a pud is 15%. Typical lot size is 40 by 110, 140. The proposed setbacks would be 25 feet front for interior lots or 30 feet for exterior lots. And can explain to us what you mean between, the difference between interior and exterior lots?
Sure. So the interior lots are inside the horseshoe, and then the exterior would be outside?
Okay. Five-foot side setbacks?
Yes.
What that doesn't allow is for vehicles to access the back.
Okay.
So we know that when we do five-foot side, and that's from the edge of the overhang, correct?
Correct.
Okay. The exterior side along the street right-of-way on corner lots will have 10 feet, and the rear will be 20 feet. Must remind you, if this pud is approved with this, there are no variances once the pud is approved. As I said, the intent is to provide single-family homes. It will provide homes within one mile of Parsons Elementary School and Harp Elementary School. It will provide a mix of housing options not widely available in the area and not achievable within the city's standard residential zoning districts due to the shape and size of the proposed lots. The interior lots have a standard 25-foot front setback. The exterior has the 30. The five-foot on the sides. The rear provides for a usable backyard. Again, I'll note that there's no access for vehicles. Each home is required to have an attached garage with capacity for at least two vehicles. They have a set of covenants which will provide requirements for the accessory structures, and we'll get onto those in a minute. Again, I remind you, it's a single-family residential, no duplexes, triplexes, or multifamily uses. The first floor up to the second floor plate for each home will be 100% brick, stone, or manufactured stone with no siding. The primary building materials will include brick, stone, manufactured stone, wood, and concrete siding such as Hardy brand. They provided some plans and elevations of several sample homes as part of this similar, with similar use of the materials, and those that you provided, they'll fit on that lot?
Yes.
Okay. To facilitate marketing and selling homes, they will provide up to four model homes at one time. At any one time, is the four model homes because you're having four different, four plans, or why would you need four model homes?
Yeah, different plans.
Okay, so you're, you're looking at four different plans, and you will have a model home from each different kind?
Yes.
Okay. We probably need to note that in the development plan that that's why there's four, because that's, that's a lot of model homes for a subdivision this, this small. The covenants include various provisions to ensure the pleasing appearance of the neighborhood is maintained, and which are typical for many developments. We'll go into those in, in just a minute. Specifying location, materials, and maximum and minimum heights for fences, requiring trash containers to be stored out of sight, and all yards are to be maintained in an orderly manner. The developer will have sidewalks throughout the subdivision along streets and through the neighborhood green for connectivity with the pud and connect it to area outside the subdivision. Those sidewalks need to go all the way out to 412 to make that connection to the 412 side of it. They are providing 15%, as I said, in a neighborhood green space, and they have provided access to that green space throughout the subdivision. The home builder will install one tree per lot during construction. Installation of the tree is a requirement prior to issuance of the certificate of occupancy. And the developer will install trees and landscaping and common areas as shown on the landscape plans. They have listed one, two, three, four, five different styles or species of trees that will be allowed to be used in this. The primary street along the front of the houses will be constructed within a 46-foot wide right-of-way, and it will be 21 feet wide, measured from backup curb to backup curb in the drive lane, and 29 feet where parking is located on, outside of the street. And did you note on the plaque where street parking is allowed? And it needs to be put on the site plan so we know where it's going to be?
I believe it's shown.
Okay. And it has provisions to protect those parking areas with curb bumpouts to protect those parking areas? The reason I ask is I don't remember seeing that.
It's shown on the, so basically the parking's going to be on the exterior side of the horseshoe.
Okay. The entire project will be developed in one phase, two access points of Robinson, and those two access points need to be built out all the way to 412 to city street standards. Will they be the same 46-foot wide right-of-way in the same street section? Or you intend those to be different because it goes through a commercial area?
They're shown within a 46-foot right-of-way, 21-foot street.
And you'll show parking, if parking is allowed on that street, at what location?
Right. It's not currently shown.
Okay, so that means no parking on the street?
On the commercial side, yes.
Okay. The fronty streets will include sidewalks along both sides of the road. Developer will construct the sidewalks along most portions of the road through green space areas and through pedestrian courtyards. Overnight parking is prohibited in all streets within the development other than designated parking areas. All the streets will be dedicated as public streets within dedicated right-of-way. There will be monument signs or plans for the entrance into the subdivision, and will those be on common property or on individual lots? Because I didn't see where it was marked as common areas where the monument signs were going to be put on there. And I asked that is because is the POA going to be the one that maintains those signs and the lots they're on?
Yes.
So those will be on common areas as well, okay? You'll make that note. They have provided a set of covenants to go along with this, which will be forced by a property owners association, which is being established in the covenants with each owner, entitled to one vote for each lot owned by the owner, and the developer will maintain four votes per lot until 99% of the lots are sold. And at that time, then the developer will only have one vote per lot. It provides for a procedure where a board of directors is elected, what is the quorum and notices and voting requirements, and it does state additions to the, to the property subdivision in Section 2.05. But you said in your plans there wouldn't be any additions, so you may want to take that section out of the covenants. It's Section 2.05. Again, if that's going to be a possibility, it has to be approved by the city as well. Leans are being added to the lots in that there will be one-time initial assessment for each of the lots for maintenance, taxes, and insurance on the common properties and other association expenses. There's a regular assessment set up for maintenance, taxes, and insurance established by the association. It has the opportunity to provide special assessments for capital or other improvements or acquisitions which assessments are to be established and collected. Special assessments may be levied against individual property owners to reimburse the association for extra costs for maintenance and repairs caused by the willful or neglect, negligent, I'll get there in a minute, acts of the individual owner, his family, guests, or invitees, and not caused by ordinary wear and tear. And individual assessments are fined or levied against individual lots, and they have the ability to place a lien on the property. The initial assessment, the one, is $150 per lot with no proportion depending on when it's bought, and the yearly assessment is set at $160. And there is a procedure where that fee can be raised by the association board, and the fact that special assessments can be levied by the board, and that those, these can be secured with a lien of the property. They have established duties and powers of the association itself, which are pretty standard of what we see in most of them. The title of the common property will be held in the association's name. They will provide rights, how people can use the common property. They're pretty standard of what we see in most of them. The maintenance of those common properties are to be kept in good repair service conditions by the association itself. And this is, the association shall also maintain any perimeter and/or screening fences that base around the borders of the subdivision or divide parts of the subdivision from properties commercial or otherwise outside of the subdivision. And I'm assuming those will be on common property, or they will be on easements provided to each lot?
Easements.
Okay. That needs to be noted, how those are on there too. The maintenance of the common properties shall include without limitation maintenance, repair, replacement, planting, siding, and any other necessary maintenance and repairs of whatever nature as may be required by the city, state, or federal code of ordinances with respect to the common property and the facilities related thereon. The cost of those will be equally distributed among the members. The lots cannot be divided or split, which means they can't be replanted. The size of the lots wouldn't allow that anyway. Only one single-family dwelling will be provided, permitted on each lot. No buildings or structures intended for adopted, for business purposes can be used on any of these lots. I'm assuming that... I'm assuming that means no home office? Or are we talking about home occupations, anything else considered to be commercial? And it doesn't, that may be something we need to clear up. Can a homeowner have an home office that meets the definition of a home office by city ordinance? The, if they're adding any accessory buildings or making changes, they will have an architectural control committee that will have to approve those plans. Those approved plans will be submitted before any building permits can be issued. No buildings can be located any closer to the street than the minimum building or setback lines, and that would include any carports or anything that goes in those areas.
Correct.
The exterior finishes we just talked about, and that would include anything that's changed on any of the lots as they move forward. The covenants also say that the drainage easements will be kept clear of any fences or anything that would impede any of the surface drainage on any of those. Garages have to be detached and storage-built. All residents constructed in the subdivisions shall have a private garage to accommodate a minimum of two automobiles. No carports are allowed on the side, rear, or front yards of any lots. Each garage should be fully enclosed and contain a full-length overhead styled door. All garage doors is to be kept closed when not entering or exiting the garage. Any detached structure to be built on this lot shall, such as a covered entertainment area, guest house, pool house, storage building, or other structures shall conform to the basic styling and materials of the residential dwelling. The committee has complete and sole discretion to approve, modify, deny, or change any requests for in addition to any structures. Can the garages be converted to living space?
No.
You may want to put that in here. I know it says. There will be no trailers, mobile homes, tents, construction shacks, or other outbuildings erected on any lot except for temporary use by construction contractors for a reasonable period of time. The fences can't be in the front yard or the side yards that go all the way to the front. No fences are allowed there. Any privacy fence that's constructed will have the framing toward the inside, and there will be six-foot privacy fences with vertical boards, not horizontal, and no chain link. Fences wire, hog wire, or other similar materials shall be permitted. Prior to installation, the fence design and name of the installer must be approved by the committee. Mailboxes have to be those that are approved by the U.S. Postal Service, and community mailboxes is approved, alternative subject to the approval of the United States Postal Service. Are you identifying a location for those?
It's not currently shown, but we will.
Okay. You'll identify that, and that will be the only kind that's being used?
Yes.
Okay, so you'll identify those locations? Signs are not allowed. As I said, there will be two monument signs, except for professional signs advertising the property for sale, release, or resell, or rent, or signs used by builders or agents who advertise the property during the construction and sale of a dwelling unit. In no event shall any such signs stand more than seven feet above ground level, nor be more than five square feet in size, nor be lighted at night. These signs restrictions and requirements shall not apply to the declarant or the owner or the builder or developer. Vehicles cannot be parked. All vehicles parked in the front of the front building line must be parked on the driveway. No inoperative vehicles of any nature shall be permitted to remain on any lot or lot for a period in excess of one day, except to special occasions such as holidays or events that an owner's resident, that all parking shall be in a driveway and not on a street or on a yard. No vehicles shall be parked on the street for more than two consecutive days and shall not be parked overnight on the street. Any violation of this section may result in a towing from the vehicle at the owner's expense per municipal regulations. No vehicle maintenance shall be performed on the streets or in the front yards or on parking pads of any lot. The owner is to keep the lot in a clean and sanitary condition. All open areas on lots shall be kept mowed to a height of not more than six inches. No playgrounds, swing sets, trampolines, swimming pools, picnic tables, or other similar equipment is allowed in the front yard of any lot. Now, this doesn't set the height of the, that when it has to be mowed for the lots themselves, it only sets for the open areas. Is it your intent that?
No, it's all open areas and lots, the second line of that.
All open areas on lots shall be kept mowed. I'm sorry? You're going to fix that where it reads, where it's all open areas and on lots, okay? Because that's not the way it reads now.
Gotcha.
Then the, they are to maintain the lawn or the grounds. They have the ability to give them a 15-days written notice and have the maintenance done and put a lien on the property if it's not paid. No boats, trailers, recreational vehicles, and vehicles used for recreational purposes are allowed in the subdivision unless they are fit entirely into a private garage. That means no boats, no campers or anything can sit in the driveway, okay? Construction materials may be stored on a lot for 30-days prior to the commencement of construction. Thereafter, construction is to be completed within a reasonable period of time. They shall be allowed to store materials on a lot in an orderly fashion as long as they be reasonably necessary under original construction. Trash, garbage, or other waste shall be kept at sanitary containers that meet city's requirements. Need to add that. They shall be located at the rear of each residential unit or enclosed garage and must be out of sight from the street. Then the model homes will be set up where the garage can be used for sales office. One trailer or temporary building may be located on a residential lot for the use as a construction office until the subdivision reaches 100% occupancy. No nuisance or offensive activities are allowed. There is some enforcement of miscellaneous things that are pretty standard and everything. It does provide that the commitment of the covenant shall run with the land and be binding on all parties and all persons claiming under the land for a period of 20-years from the date this instrument is recorded, after which time covenant shall be automatically extended for successive 10-year periods. They can't be modified unless it comes back to the city, okay?
Understood.
And I think that's it.
All right. Any questions or comments? Let's do the commission.
The only question I have on the ECR or the CDD, CCR, excuse me, is because it says draft on there, is that open to change since it's not a final version?
Well, once it's approved by the planning commission and once it's approved by the city council, it becomes the permanent document.
Okay, thank you.
And they have a few things that we have to correct tonight, and we'll check those before it goes to council. It won't actually, the covenants won't actually be signed until they get into construction correct, in that way you, they have to be signed and filed at the time that the final plat is.
Final plat, yeah.
Yeah. And you will see the final plat and the covenants that goes with it before they're authorized to sell any lots.
Okay, thank you.
How does the fencing work in the backyard for the interior lots? Do, is, does the fence go, will they have fencing for the backyard that go down both sides and then in the back?
Yes, to at least the, or not further than the face of the house toward the street.
And is that required for each lot as the house is built? Or is that the property owners have to decide whether they want one or not? Because it doesn't say it's mandatory fencing on the side lots.
So the fences will be, so they're going to sell the lot, so the intent would be that the homeowner would install those fences. They're not going to be installed with the house.
They are required to install them, or they have the option to install them?
They have the option.
Okay. That answer your question, Peyton. So you could add two or three where there's not any side fences, but the rear of those lots on the exterior will have a fence?
The rear, so there will be a fence, if I'm looking, we're looking at the site plan here, on the, I guess, well, the way this is, the east, the backside of those houses in the middle of the loop, they will have a consistent fence all the way down the back.
Now, that's not what this says. It says you're doing perimeter fencing, so the lots, the interior lots are not required to have any fencing of any kind.
Right.
So I'm trying to understand how the, let me explain what I'm trying to understand.
Okay, hold on just a second. Can you turn Peyton up a little bit louder? He's hard to hear.
Can you hear me better?
Um, that's as high as it'll go. Right.
So what I'm trying, what I'm trying to understand is how the, how the walking trails section of this, how that, how that works. Because what it looks to me is though I'm walking, how wide is that section, first of all, between the, between the back of each fence? The green space section right there, how wide is that?
It's about 75 feet.
Okay. So what I'm imagining is I'm walking on a walking trail here, and it's got, you know, I mean, there are, you know, tin trees or shrubs back here, but am I just looking at the back of people's fences? And then if they don't have the, if it's not mandated that they put the fence, am I walking through there and looking into their backyard?
I mean, currently, we have it shown with the option only for six-foot privacy fence is what's stated in the documents.
But if a property owner decides not to put up a fence along the back, you can see all the way?
Sure, yes.
Okay. And if they decide to put a fence, does it have to be on the property line, or where can it be?
Be on the property line.
Okay. If they put a rear fence on the interior lots, it has to be at the property line?
Yes.
You need to put that in the document itself, too.
I'm personally not in, not in favor of that. People store things in their backyard, and, you know, we got 87. How many, how many are in the interior? I mean, we've got, you know, they're on 40-foot wide lots, so you got a, you got a pretty decent density in there, and I just don't think, you know, I don't think giving them the option of whether they want to fence that back there, I'm not really a big fan of that. I think people store things in their backyard, and then I think you can, you know, I think it just creates complication because that stuff isn't screened. If there were, so I could give you an example, if there were like plant screening down both sides of that, that might help with that, maybe that's a solution. I'm just not a big fan of having this interior space kind of letting the people make the choice about whether they could have fences there or not have fences there. I think, I think it needs fencing on the interior for sure.
Okay. Peyton, we can require that.
Okay, I think that'd be a little bit better.
You're going to require that all the interior lots have rear fencing along the property lines?
Yes.
To be installed by the builder when they build the house?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, cool. My second question was about the overnight parking. So how much over, how many parking spaces does that overnight parking accommodate right now? Do we know?
I don't have those delineated.
If it, I was thinking if it was like a 40-foot lot, they've got, well, each house already has a driveway that could accommodate two big vehicles plus an attached garage, right?
Correct, yeah, so four spaces.
So every house has four spaces. It just seems like, you know, what I've, what I've seen from other, some other developments is that, yeah, that city, that street may get dedicated over to the city, but then you've got, you know, you just got, I see that getting taken advantage of, and, you know, if there's, maybe the, you know, maybe the property owners' association will come to fruition, but maybe it, maybe it won't fully operate that way. I'm just, I think that's, I think having overnight parking available when each house already has four lots just seems like that could get crowded in there. And again, I know that, I know that the, that the PUD says that should only be used for one day maximum, but I mean, right, who's really, who's really keeping track of that? And so I just, I just felt like maybe that that, you know, providing for additional off-street or overnight parking just puts us in a situation we might not want to have to police, if that makes sense. That's a lot, if, so by the 87 houses, you can already put 348 cars in the subdivision. Do we really need more? That's my question.
Peyton, we were trying to, we were trying to utilize the on-street parking, you know, road section that's available. We can eliminate that or remove some of that parking option.
It's only on the, Jason, is it only on the outside of the loop, or it's also on the interior of the loop?
Just on the outside of the loop.
So the houses on the interior really don't, that's, they don't have that in front of, in front of that property?
Correct, not right in front of their, their house or unit, yeah.
So the only parking on the street would be on the outside?
The outside, yes.
Okay. I still, I still just think it's a lot. I think it becomes a, I think it, I think it becomes the spot that people leave their fifth car, and I think it's hard to, I think it's hard to regulate, and I think we end up with a less desirable product. But that's just, that's just personal opinion. I don't know if there's a way that we could compromise there, but that's just, that's just me.
City ordinance does not allow you to park in the street in front of somebody else's house?
Is there, one more, I had one more question. I see Ben had, was going to ask one. Is there any lighting for the, for the paths, for the walking paths? I know that you probably don't want, you know, large, like tall lights, but I didn't know if there's walking path lighting for that, because I just, you know, you get in a situation, I know that we try to, you know, we try to account for this in, you know, multifamily developments, but you have this kind of interior space where it's between two backyards, and it's dark, and I just wondered if there's any lighting back there, either on the path or anywhere back there that might make that a little safer?
Currently, there's not any shown. We could add some, you know, bollard lighting along that trail.
I think that, I think that might be best, too.
So you're saying you will add that?
Yes.
Okay. That needs to be added to the development plan as well as the site plan, and what will be the spacing on this?
I'm not sure. Can I get back with you between now and council with the lighting plan?
Okay. The lighting plan will be amended to include bollards along the trail, the interior of it. Okay.
Okay, those are my comments. Thanks.
Yeah, I was just going to throw out there that if they're 40-foot lots, 20-foot of it will be used up with driveways, so you're really only getting one on-street parking per lot. So if, you know, if there's 87 lots and half of them are on the outside perimeter, you're only getting 40 overnight parking spots. So it's really not, I know it looks like a lot, but it's really not in the real sense of where they'll be able to use it.
Okay, thanks, cool.
Any other questions or comments? This will be a call for the vote for the rezoning.
Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mr. Coburn.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Eiler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Zoning pass is 7-0.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the 22nd.
Thank you.
And then the preliminary plats, this would be a motion?
Well, we need to go over staff comments first.
Oh.
And Austin's going to do the staff comments on. And Austin's gonna do the staff comments on the preliminary plot.
Uh, plenty of comments. As Pat mentioned earlier, we are asking for, uh, complete street improvements for the full length of Street One and Street Two, all the way to East Robinson, including sidewalks, street lighting, et cetera. Um, we have two playground areas shown. We're just asking there to get, I guess, a detail for two different, uh, playgrounds and maybe let those cater to two different age groups and not be redundant with that, which we've got a general detail on the plans, so. Revising landscaping plan to reflect the sidewalk changes made within the northern green space. We had a couple of changes recently to, I guess, increase connectivity within the green space. We just need the landscaping updated to get a couple conflicts on that, so. Actually don't have the engineering comments in front of me. Uh, Katie, are you with us?
Yes. Um, I just had a few comments. Um, just need an updated drainage report since the pond switched to, from a wet pond to a dry pond. And then, um, grading application package. That's all I've got.
And we took the, uh, amenities that were in the pond out and they won't be in the pond anymore?
We moved them out at engineering request.
Okay.
So we, we still kept them in the project. We just didn't, we didn't keep them in the bottom of the pond area.
Yeah. We did not think that was the best idea for maintenance purposes. Um, but we talked and kinda compromised to include that walking trail all the way around the pond and the playground area. So it's kind of like a cohesive area now.
Is that it?
This would be a motion subject to staff comments.
Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission, it'd be a motion.
Motion subject to staff comments.
By Mr. Covert?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peters.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Eiler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Pass is seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, R twenty-one dash twenty-nine, Amber Mendez and Rodolfo Velazquez, twelve ninety-seven Cooper Drive, from A one to MF twenty-four, presented by Kelly Hamblin, Hamblin Design Services.
Hi, I'm Kelly Hamblin. Um, I'm representing the owners for twelve ninety-seven Cooper Drive. I'll also be representing, um, Mr. Mathias on, uh, ten oh one and twelve thirty-five Cooper Drive as well. The next item on the agenda. Um, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Staff comments?
The adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates low-density residential or medium-density residential use for the area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies that the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval. Protect the positive aspects of neighborhood character throughout the city. Appropriate locations for single-family and multifamily residential development. Uh, share la- adequate land allocation for residential purposes by providing lots of adequate size and encourage the development of a variety of housing types appropriate to the size and income of all households living and working in Springdale.
Any questions or comments from the audience?
My name is Donna Campbell and I reside at-
Can you pull that mic down just a little bit? I'm sorry.
Okay. My name is Donna Campbell. I reside at fifteen forty-three Winsworth Avenue, Springdale, seven-two-seven-six-two. My property is zoned SF-two per the map that was attached to my notification. Reviewing that attached map, one of the properties to the north of Cooper Drive is MF twenty-four and another is MF twelve. For the City of Springdale ordinances, MF twenty-four is restricted to sites abutting collector and arterial streets and may be developed either adjacent to or in conjunction with neighborhood commercial or shopping center developments. Although the property owned by Mr. Mathias is currently zoned commercial, the property owned by Ms. Mendez and Mr. Velazquez is not. Therefore, I request not to rezone this property to MF twenty-four as my adjacent property is not commercial and such does not fit the code to be zoned MF twenty-four. Earlier this year, I noticed the massive earth moving directly north of my property. Currently apartments are now under construction on that man-made mountain. I feel quite certain that the man-made mountain was created because of a floodplain. Portions of the property being requested for rezoning are floodplain, as is my property. Therefore, I request that no development will occur that would change, that would change the current flood status of any of these properties. Any man-made change of the flood zones on any of these properties could potentially harm my property by changing and increasing the flood zone areas of my property. If any earth moving is planned for these properties, I propose an environmental impact study to ensure no harm to existing adjacent property. Also, there could be possible damage to the Razorback Greenway, which is a responsibility of the City of Springdale to maintain and is funded by city taxpayers. In summary, I request that the property adjacent to my property not be rezoned to MF twenty-four. Second, I request that the building and development of these properties does not change the existing flood zone designations that exist on all of these properties that potentially could harm the flood zone designation of my property. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Good evening. My name is Jim McLean. I live at twenty-four hundred Cheyenne Trail, which is actually the dead end of Cheyenne Trail. So my bar property actually butts up to the creek that runs between what used to be Parsons Farm and everything else in this area. My concerns deal with a lot of the drainage and stuff that's happening in that area. I worry about stepping over or the tipping point as far as what the creek can handle. We have watched in the past floods that have wiped out the bridge and currently even flood, flooding that has damaged the new bridge that isn't even completed yet. I look at what's going on, on, at, on the north side of Cooper Road. There are multiple multifamily apartments going up on the north side of Cooper Road. I understand that this is what the plan is now for the south side of Cooper Road, which goes clear to the creek and walking trail and all that area. There is gonna be so much drainage and stuff that comes off of these properties and stuff. I don't think the creek can handle it. And I have concerns because I'm not originally from Arkansas or even Spring- Springdale or even Arkansas. Used to live in a community called Lima, Ohio, that the Audible River flowed through, that the sewage treatment plant was on the southwest side of the town. And the Audible River, River flowed west through Lima up to Lake Erie, which along the highway is like sixty-five, seventy miles. How long that is on the river system, I have no idea. But what happened was we had a major rain and it flooded, the river flooded and it flooded out the sewage treatment plant. But worse than that, it also flooded out what, a Vistron chemical plant and its Ohio refinery that was just west of the sewage treatment plant. So when this happened, it backed up all the sewage into all the properties in Lima and all the streets in Lima. Vistron Chemical had applied for and been granted permission to put in what they called an EPA settling pond. And what they were settling out, I have no idea. But when that flood happened, they watched their settling pond float down the river all the way to Lake Erie. And it polluted everything along the path. I mean, contaminated all the wildlife, everything, all the planets. They had a problem with three-eyed fish. The biggest problem was all three eyes were on the same side. So what, what we're looking at and what my fear is, is a repeat of that problem. You are looking at, if you step over this tipping point, there's no going back. You cannot control what nature can throw at you. And you look at the stress that it's gonna put on all the services within the City of Springdale, not only the sewage, the drainage, the schools, all of it. These apartments are huge. I've already looked at the ones that have already been built. They look nice. I mean, I'm not complaining about that. But you look at the influx of pu- people in a very small area and what that runoff is gonna be into that creek area and stuff like that. Guys, this gets scary, cause like I said, I've seen what happens and it is not good. So my concerns for not only twenty-nine but thirty goes right along with it. And one of the things I tried to check into is, as far as the floodplains and everything else. And I'm looking at further expansion further west along the bike path and that stream. And the first thing you say is, well, it's in the floodplain, there's, there's no worry about that. But when I checked into it, you can actually landfill that and actually build upon it. So, question is, how much do you get, where do you get all that fill? Well, the answer is right down at the end of Wagon Wheel Road. You have a quarry that has all the scrape-off and everything else that they have to do to get to the stone. I understand that. Over the years that I've lived here, I've kinda watched that quarry and watched that scrape-off pile just keep building and building and building, okay? Quarry would love to give somebody all that dirt and stone and everything else for fill. So the question becomes, do we allow people to take that and fill everything completely in, in what used to be Parsons pasture in that area, behind our house, clear up to JB Hunt Park? And build as many apartments as you wanna build? So I just, I just think that we are really asking for a major catastrophe if we go along these routes. And I think it's justified as far as those concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I think there was another gentleman that had a comment. No other comments? Okay. It's to the commission.
Properties in the floodway or the flood zone?
I think they have both floodway and floodplain. And you know, the ordinance will not allow them to be built, anything in the floodway itself. The provisions for the, you know, how much you can raise it is all in there and they have to detain on site. Those are questions that will be addressed with the large scale development plan that comes in. We have those provisions in place already.
There's no development plans as of right now.
And it doesn't matter who develops it, it's the same requirements for whoever develops it.
Right.
And that was what was done with the ones on the north side. They all have detention. All that is addressed through the development process itself.
Would be a motion?
This is a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
We have a call for vote by Mr. Covert.
Peters?
Yes.
Eiler?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
I'm, I guess I'm missing somebody.
Austin.
Austin.
Oh, Howard Austin, sorry.
Yes.
Thank you.
Pass is seven zero.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the twenty-second.
Thank you.
So next, that was just for-
Don't go away, Kelly. You got the answer too.
We have R twenty-one dash thirty, John A. Mathias, uh, thousand one and twelve thirty-five Cooper Drive, from C two to MF twenty-four, presented by K- Kelly Hamblin, Hamblin Design Services.
Same comments as the last one. It's a probably right adjacent to.
Questions or comments from the audience? To the commission? Call for the vote? Yes. We have a call for the vote by Ms. Mueller?
Eiler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley? Peters?
Yes.
This pass is seven zero.
Thank you.
Staff will prepare the ordinance on this one, June twenty-second.
Next item, R twenty-one dash thirty-one, I- ISC Properties LLC, twenty-two hundred, twenty-three hundred, twenty-four hundred, Old Missouri Roads, from C five to I one, presented by Greg Edwards.
Hello?
Hi there.
Do you wanna tell us you wanna go back from C five to I one is what it used to be before?
Yes, ma'am.
It's, uh, staff comments?
The comprehensive land use plan indicates regional, commercial and light industrial warehouse use for this property. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies that the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval. Encourage the development of industries that further diversify and stabilize the city's economic base. Share adequate land allocation for industrial growth protected from encroachment by non-industrial use. And it was I one before, it's just going back to that.
Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission? It's be a call for the vote?
Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Ms. Mueller?
Austin?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Eiler?
Yes.
This pass is seven zero.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the twenty-second.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, R twenty-one dash thirty-two, Breen Properties LLC, seven oh seven South Forty-Eight Street, from C five to C six, presented by Daryl Howerton.
Hi. Hi, I'm Liliana. I'm here representing Daryl Howerton.
Well, hold on a second. We gotta see if you have authorization to represent him.
Yeah.
But we gotta have it in writing.
Okay. I submitted an affidavit.
Okay. And your name again?
I'm sorry. Liliana Pena.
We're good. Okay. We're ready to go.
All right. Uh, can you tell us a little bit about this?
Uh, yeah. So we're current, the property is currently zoned as a C five and we're trying to get zoned, rezoned to a C six, um, for commercial use of vehicle and other, um, automobile services.
Staff comments?
Uh, the adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates regional commercial use for the area. The current zoning is in keeping with the land use plan and the rezoning request is not, uh, recommended for approval.
Any questions or comments from the audience?
We do have several, uh, comments that were submitted. I can, oh, okay.
Are there any questions or comments from the audience?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I own a piece of property actually directly across sixty-fourth Street from the subject property. Uh, it, it has not been developed. It's something that we're working on, hopefully to develop in the future. And, um-
You mean across Forty-Eighth Street?
What'd I say?
It's sixty-four. This is Forty-Eighth Street, right?
I was looking at the next one down here. Sorry. Yeah. Uh, Forty-Eighth Street. And, um, you know, uh, my main issue with it, and I sent a email to all y'all. It was late this afternoon, so I don't know if you received it or not, uh, or had a chance to look at it. But, um, the main objection I have is that they're going to, uh, have damaged vehicles, wrecks or whatever. They're, they're going to, according to what I read in the application, they're gonna take them and work on them and resell them. I talked to a couple of the property owners around it, uh, cause I had my own feelings and I just didn't wanna think I was the only one that felt this way. And, and they- And they have really been, I guess, upset by what's been going on there the last period of time. There's wrecked vehicles that have parts off of them and on the lot. And I guess there's some cars there that are for sale. But I don't think it's appropriate to have that type of activity in that area, especially given that a lot, there's Burton Pools and Spas. That's the entrance into the Burton's there that, that this property fronts on. There's a wheel and tire dealership, brand new building that's built there. They probably spent a million dollars on it or more. More. And there's, and everything's been built to, to the city standards. And 48th Street's going to continue to develop right on down because of its position close to the interstate. And I just feel like it'd be setting a poor precedent to allow that type of activity on this particular property. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other questions or comments?
Hi. I don't know if you all received this email either or not. I believe it was sent late this afternoon. But I am here representing the owners of R&amp;R Investments. R&amp;R Investments built the building that is located across the little side street from the property that we're talking about at this hearing. Its address is 767 South 48th Street. We are requesting the rezoning from C5 to C6 not be approved. Our building houses the corporate offices of Rental Concepts, which owns and operates 28 R&amp;R Tire Express locations, including one at this location. And adjacent to our corporate offices, offices is the offices of Rainwater Holton Sexton. We have a significant investment in our development at 767 South 48th. And we relied on the fact that the adjacent property was zoned C5 when we developed our property. We have noted that this rezoning request is not in compliance with the comprehensive land use plan. This site is clearly visible from I-49 at the Highway 412 exit, which is the main entrance into the city of Springdale. Allowing a zoning change to accommodate the repair of wrecked vehicles and the sale of used vehicles is not compatible with the existing surrounding uses. And we feel that it will devalue our property and the surrounding commercial, commercial and retail development. So in summary, we are just requesting that this request not be approved.
Thank you.
And you do have that email in your packet. We have another one from.
Christie Smith.
Christie, yeah. And David Burton from Burton Pools and Spas, uh, Pools and Spa in opposition. We have an email from Dr. Compton with his views on that. And we'll just put those all on the record unless y'all want me to read them all. We're for work.
There. We'll just put them all on the record. Any other questions or comments? It's to the commission.
Call for the vote?
Call for the vote by Mr. Covert.
Covert?
No.
Mueller?
No.
Parker?
No.
Parsley?
No.
Peters?
No.
Heiler?
No.
Austin?
No.
This does not pass seven zero.
The property owner has the right to appeal the planning commission's decision. That appeal has to be filed within 15 days to the city clerk, addressing why you think the planning commission's decision was an error and the adjacent property owners have to be notified again. Okay?
Next item, R 21-33, Terry Pressley, west of South 64th Street and north of Deering Road, from A1 to C2, presented by Terry Pressley.
Hi, I'm Terry Pressley.
Want to tell us a little bit about this?
Yes. I bought the property recently and what I would like to do is build what's called, what I would refer to as tradesman, tradesman storage slash office, offices. So be like a storefront with a plumbing business. I own and operate a plumbing business around the area.
Okay. Staff comments?
This area is part of the Southwest Overlay District. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval. Improve the city's economic base and tax structure through the promotion of healthy, stable commercial concentrations. Ensure adequate land allocation for commercial areas of sufficient size and in proper locations and encourage the development of a wide range of commercial development for the residents and tourists to include neighborhood, community, and regional commercial uses.
Any questions or comments in the audience?
Frankly, I wasn't here for this. But I do own property right across the street from it and I didn't receive a notice of this.
You have the white receipts and the green cards that came back?
We turned them into the permanent receipt.
Signed for it in your office. We have the white copies. We don't have the green copies that came back. One is addressed to Talvo Properties LLC, 5100 South Thompson, was mailed on May the 13th.
I'm not saying he didn't mail them. I'm just saying I didn't get, I didn't see it. I didn't, I opened my mail on a regular basis and I didn't see anything like that. And I'm not even saying I'm against it. I'm just saying I didn't, this is the first I heard about it, sitting right here.
You are listed. Talvo Properties LLC is listed on the, on the list. So I. We have the whites, we have the white sheet that showed it was mailed. We don't have the green card that says it was accepted, but I do have that. So where does that leave us? Can we hear it or not?
If it'll help any, I, I mean, I'm, I'll waive my notice.
Okay, that works then. If you're willing to waive your notice, that's fine. We're good.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? It's to the commission.
Can you go to the next slide that shows the commercial around this? There you go. It is C5 to the north and C2 to the. And that little corner that belongs to the city has been sold to Philip. We, it just hasn't been rezoned. I've got a little piece.
I was just going to say, there's not much left, but there is a little sliver left there too. Okay.
It's be a call for the vote?
Call for the vote?
Call for vote by Mr. Covert.
Recused.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Heiler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Yes, and one recused. This passes.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the June, on June the 22nd. Let me remind you that this is in the overlay district and any construction will have to meet the overlay district standards. So before you start designing a building, you probably need to come talk to us. Let me talk to you about what the standards are.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, R 21-34, Children's Safety Center, 3284 and 3300 Gene George Boulevard, approximately 6.3 acres west of Gene George and south of Harvest Ballpark, from A1 to C2, presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jason Apple with ESI. We're here requesting this piece of property to be zoned from A1 to C2. And I'll answer any questions.
Staff comments?
Again, this piece of property is in the Southwest Overlay District. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval. Improve the city's economic base and tax structures through the promotion of healthy, stable commercial concentrations. Ensure adequate land allocation for commercial areas, a sufficient size and improper location, and encourage the development of a wide range of commercial development. I guess my question is, is there a reason why they didn't ask for P1 and they went C2? It's a nonprofit organization. They're building their own facility there.
Correct.
Okay. I just was curious.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Okay. I was just curious why they went for C2 instead of P1. Okay?
Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
Call for the vote?
Call for vote by Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Heiler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Mueller?
Recused.
I have six yes and one recused. This passes.
Thank you.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the 22nd.
Next section is conditional use. C 21-13, Iglesia de Dios Pentecostal MI, 1880 South Pleasant Street, U.S. Unit 42, Church Synagogue in a C2, presented by Maria Perez.
Hello, good evening. My name is Maria Perez and I'm presenting La Iglesia de Dios Pentecostal MI with the pastores Paz, Mirta, and Rafael Urenia.
Okay. Staff comments?
Okay, this, this site, can we go to the next?
Yeah, I was under the impression that there was tabled, so we don't have this in the PowerPoint.
Okay. The ingress and egress to this piece of property is acceptable, except that you have two commercial buildings on this site. The off-street parking and loading areas is unacceptable. They are required to have 42 parking spaces based on the Fire Marshal's recommendation of a occupancy of 146 people, I think it says.
Uh, 167.
I'm sorry?
It was 167 they gave us.
167, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
42 parking spaces. There are only 52 spaces on the entire site. The hours of service that they are handling provides a conflict with the other uses that are on this piece of property. They indicated that they would have services throughout the week. There is signed shared agreements, but we didn't have an allocation of what each of those uses were and how many spaces were assigned for each other. They will have services on Sundays at 11 and 2, a Tuesday evening service at 7, a Friday service at 7, and a Saturday service at 8. The salon and the martial arts place are both open during those times, so they wouldn't have those spaces to give up. Sir Speedy is open, probably not that time, except on weekends. I just don't think there's adequate parking for a church to be at this location. So my recommendation is to deny the conditional use.
Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission? It's be a call for the vote?
Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mrs. Mueller.
Parsley?
No.
Peters?
No.
Heiler?
No.
Austin?
No.
Covert?
No.
Mueller?
No.
Parker?
No.
This does not pass seven zero.
You have the right to file an appeal with the city council.
Okay.
You have to do that within 15 days. You have to indicate why you think the planning commission's decision is in error and you have to notify the adjacent property owners again.
Yes, ma'am. Real quick, it, it was from my understanding, I should have brought it up. They, from my understanding, it was 25 parkings that they gave us that we should have as far as that. And I wasn't aware for the 42 on that when we communicated with the, the Fire Marshals and there was another gentleman by the name of Gary. And I'm, I heard 25, so I wasn't on, I wasn't aware of the 42.
Okay. It's based on the occupancy load and it, and it's one parking space for each four persons and 167, 167 would require you to have 42 spaces, so.
Okay. Okay. Yes. Thank you.
Blue and Associates online.
All right. Let's see. Next section, large scale, L 21-18, Carson Engineering and Manufacturing Incorporated, 1764 Turnboat Avenue. Also have a waiver for street improvements to Bain Street, presented by ESI. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brandon Rush with ESI. It looks like we're on a Barbary Court, but do you want me to proceed with the Carson?
Just tell us a little bit more about this overall development.
First, yeah, we're in Carson.
Sure. It's a 2.8 acre site overall. There's an existing facility on there and they're looking to add a 10,000 square foot building in the rear and some parking and just minor site improvements that go along with that building.
Staff comments?
Austin's going to.
Sharon, do you mind to jump forward to the next sheet there? Okay. So planning comments. Improvements to Bain Street will be subject to the outcome of waiter, waiver for the street improvements.
Hey, Austin, can you pull that mic down?
Yeah, sure. So Bain Street actually is shown on the MSP, so they have requested a waiver for the street improvements there, provided 24-month guarantee for all landscaping. All tree planting should be installed at minimum height of eight feet and two-inch trunk helper. Please revise landscaping note number seven. Engineering summary. Submit grading application. Looks like we have a request for smoothing out some of the transitions in the sidewalk, jogging around the street light or fire hydrants, et cetera. Check with Springdale Water for minimum distance between hydrant and sidewalk. Street look, street light appears to be in the sidewalk. Provide sidewalk connection between the buildings. Katie, do you have anything to add to that?
Nope, that's all. And then I, oh, you guys had the waiver of Bain Street. That was the only other thing that we, we had. We recommend payment in lieu of, if that's something the commission would like to do.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission?
Need to do the waiver. This would be a recommendation to council whether to approve or engineering is recommending payment in lieu of. Is that something that your client would be interested in doing? Do you know? You need to discuss that with them before we get to council meeting. Okay?
So that can be our recommendation is payment in lieu of.
Be your recommendation if that motion is made.
Okay. Have a recommendation of motion? Of doing payment in lieu of?
Yes.
Okay. So have a motion by Mrs. Mueller?
Second.
Second by Mr. Covert.
Peters?
Yes.
Heiler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Recommendation for payment in lieu of, passes seven zero. And large scale. It's be a motion.
Staff comments?
Motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
By Mr. Covert.
Second.
Heiler?
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Large scale passes seven zero.
Staff will prepare the resolution to go to council on the 22nd with the recommendation for payment in lieu.
Okay. Thank you.
By the way, the, the Sutherland's are online and would like to present their item.
Yeah, thanks, Peyton. So we'll go back to C 21-15, Justin Chase and Jenny. So we'll go back to C twenty-one dash fifteen, Justin Chase and Jenny Sutherland, nineteen two twelve Sonora Road, tandem lot in a planning area presented by Blue and Associates.
Thank you, council members, and sorry on behalf of, on our behalf, uh, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Need your name.
Okay, good. I'm not sure what the confusion was with Blue and Associates not being there to attend, so I apologize for that. What would you like to know? It's the tandem lot.
If you can first state your name, um, that would be great.
I'm sorry?
If you can give us your name.
Justin Chase Sutherland.
Okay. Thanks, thanks Justin.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, as far as a little bit more about what you're asking for.
Okay, we purchased three acres to the, it would be the right bottom. It's gonna be the southeast of the lot. We're gonna have a shared egress, um, ingress, egress. So that far bottom right, three acres, um, we purchased and, and I guess this is just to, um, for conditional use.
Okay. Staff comments?
Sharon, can you go to the drawing? It should be the next one. Okay.
There it is.
Austin, do you have any comments on this one?
There was one comment that was made, the, it looks like the actual section of paving is showing to encroach on the property to the east here. So we do want to make note of that. That will be something that we'll have to correct prior to approval of this plan.
And then do you have septic system approval for the size of the lot to be split off?
Yes.
Okay, and do we have that?
We do.
Okay.
It, it, it's on file with the county.
And you've been to the county planning office or the county planning board already?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. We'll send our comments to the county.
Okay.
Is that it?
As far as I know, everything's been filed through, filed with the county and, and, and good to go. Blue and Associates would be more, this was kind of our last step. We, we were under the impression, um, so any further than that. I know the, the asphalt is the, the property in the very front that was purchased, um, if you can see it, I don't see the parcel, zero, zero, three. The asphalt ends at their second driveway and the rest is just gravel road. So as it pertains to correction, we can always modify that. It's my grandparents' place, uh, just to the west. The zero, zero, two, and, um, so we'd just be sharing a driveway with them, but that wouldn't be a problem, um, moving forward.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission? This will be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote?
Call for vote by Mr. Peters.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
This passes seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Going back to the large scale, L twenty-one dash twenty Chandler Equipment Incorporated, forty-one eighty West Sunset Avenue, presented by Bates and Associates.
How's it going? Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Uh, this is Jake Chavis from Bates and Associates, um, representing Chandler Equipment. We're proposing a building addition on the existing Chandler Equipment campus with associated drives, parking stalls, and drainage improvements, and I'm here for any questions if anybody has.
Staff comments?
Planning comments? The MSP does indicate an eight foot multi-use along the, um, I guess the northern side there. I believe we have a five foot sidewalk shown currently, so that is one thing we want to mention. A five foot sidewalk along the full length of the building along any side that features a customer entrance is required. The sidewalk should be set back from the building foundation, at least six feet to provide areas for foundation landscaping. I don't think we're meeting that, if I'm not mistaken. Do we have a, a six foot green space buffer shown between the sidewalk and the building facade?
Uh, no, there's not one currently shown.
Okay.
They say no?
Right.
No, no ma'am.
Okay.
So do, do we plan to apply for a variance on that item, or?
Yes, yeah, that, currently that's the plan, is to apply for a variance. The way that the calendar is a little mixed up, so we didn't get a chance to do it before tech review. Uh, but our plan is to submit one in the next middle of the day.
And will we get a request of a waiver for the multi-use sidewalk?
Now, on, on the sidewalk, we're, we're still kind of thinking about, but the owner would have to remove a lot of utilities to, to get an eight feet, uh, to get that three extra feet in there. So we're only, that's why we're only showing a five foot right now.
Okay. Provide fixtures spec sheet and pole heights for the unified lighting plan. I know we received a lighting plan, but I don't think we had those detailed.
Sorry, you repeat that.
Yeah, we have the unified lighting plan, but we didn't get details on the actual pole heights or the fixtures themselves, so we're, we're looking for a little further detail on the lighting.
Okay, yeah, we, we can provide that, but I think there's gonna be twenty foot tall, tall light poles.
Okay.
Standard.
The roof line of the east elevation is showing over a hundred feet in length. I don't think we have a break on that currently.
That would be an architect question, and I think Mr. Dave Burris may be on the line.
Yeah, uh, this is Dave Burris, Burris Architecture. So we, uh, we did meet with Pat's early on, kind of talk about some of the design and, and improved materials and have provided, uh, do we have the renderings? It could be.
Can we jump forward to the elevation?
Can you get to the microphone a little bit closer? You're a little hard to hear.
Yes.
Thank you.
That's great. And we have a, a series of renderings as well.
Can you jump forward?
But there we go. So our street view here, we're, we're utilizing this building addition to try to kind of cover up. The building on the left is existing, and so we're matching those materials, uh, some of the pilasters, some of the projections up there, uh, and, and putting it, the addition obviously kind of set back. So the goal is kind of tie this campus in together, as well as kind of hide some of those, uh, uh, buildings, more industrial looking buildings there in the rear. So we did, uh, put improved materials on all three exposed facades of this main building addition. As well as vertical and horizontal projections and material changes.
Sharon, can you jump to the next slide? So this, I believe that is actually the section that I'm referring to on the roof line. I mean, I, I think that is over a hundred feet in length and it doesn't show any break in the roof line right there.
Yes, and I believe that we re, uh, sent in a, a design, uh, a waiver request of design standards and proposing the attached, uh, with, with what is presented here.
So that, that'll be a variance item?
And I believe that was, that was submitted there along with, with Jeff's. Yes, sir.
So the variance will come in with the, uh, the other one, when we hear them at the same time. Okay.
Right, okay.
Yes, that's correct.
Engineering summary, revised discrepancies in drainage report, submit grading permit application. Says sidewalk on north side of Sunset, be eight foot wide, we discussed that earlier. Show all proposed and existing street lights. Katie, do you have anything further to add to that?
That's all, thank you.
Okay. That's it?
All right. Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
This is a motion, subject to staff comments.
Motion subject.
Subject staff comments?
Have a motion by Mr. Peters. Have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Covert.
Austin?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Large scale passes seven zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next section, Board of Adjustments, B twenty-one dash forty-three, Donald Brady Junior, eight oh seven West End Street, variance deviation of sign requirements in an O one, presented by Donald Brady.
Good evening, everyone. I have, I, in the last, um, commit, uh, planning, uh, meeting, I, uh, was able to rezone to an O one. I, I checked on signage and the way that I, I'm told is that under O one, I can only have a wall sign, something that's on the building. The law office has like a huge tree in the front yard, which covers most of the front and, which has primarily windows. And so if I was able to put a sign, it would be very small and, and rather useless. And so i- if I don't get the variance, I probably won't do a sign at all. What I'm requesting is a, to be able to put a sign near the street. Most of the businesses around me have street signs, however, it would be a, a variance from, um, a building that's zoned O one. So I don't know how well I described what I'm asking for, but I, I'm asking for a variance so that I can put a sign next to the street.
Staff comments?
Uh, the difference being the properties to the south are zoned C two and this is zoned O one. You want to put a four by eight sign? Is that the size that you want to put in?
Yes, please.
Okay. That's your call. You know, that's a rather large sign for a O one district being, uh.
I could, I, I, actually my paralegal's taken most of the, the work for me and she's done all the creative, um, stuff. I, I can't visualize it, that's what we picked out, but I would be willing to do whatever you're comfortable with, up to a four by eight.
Well, they gotta give you a variance to allow you to put a sign of any kind, so we need to pick a size if we're going to approve the variance.
Well, what, yeah, what we got quoted on was a four by eight, and so I, I, I guess I would go forward with that, if that's acceptable to the commission.
Anything else? Okay, any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission? This is a call for the vote?
Call for the vote?
A call for the vote by Mr. Covert.
Covert?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Variance passes seven zero.
Thank you very much.
You need to go to the building inspection office to get a sign permit.
I'll do it, thank you.
Next section, waivers, twenty-one dash ten, Todd and Laura Setzer, three oh eight East Lakeview Drive, waiver for sidewalk requirements, presented by Todd Setzer. No one? Okay. We have N nineteen dash zero six, Rollers Custom Woodworks, request for one year extension of non-large scale development. That was approved on March twenty-ninth, presented by Sean Roller.
Is he here?
Yeah, I think he's outside. It's Jason with ESI, we did the engineering on the large scale or non-large scale.
He's asking for a one year.
We're just asking for a one year extension, yeah.
I don't think Stephanie has any problems with the extension.
No.
Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
Be a motion to approve a one year extension.
Have a motion?
Motion to approve.
To approve one year extension?
Motion by Mr. Peters. Second?
Second.
Covert?
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Extension passes seven zero.
Thank you.
And was Todd and Laura Setzer, were they here? Have anyone for the, the waiver? Planning Director Report?
Counsel actions in May, the council approved, uh, ordinance to correct a scrivener's error in the rezoning on Apple Blossom from C two to I one. They approved, uh, the rezonings for the southern end of McCullough from A one to MF sixteen, from southwest end, uh, from SF two to O one, from, uh, five fifteen standards for C one to P one. Twenty-three seventy-seven North Fifty-sixth Street from A one to SF two, and a one acre tract west of Grimsley, north of Kerry Smith from A one to SF one. The, uh, conditional uses that were recommended for the Use Unit thirty-five at thirty-two forty-eight North Forty-eighth Street and for the church on nine oh one Norman Street were all approved. And the three tandem lot splits that were submitted were also approved. They approved the replat of Lot Four of Howard Acres and the final plat for Sam's Club. They approved an option agreement for sale of the property at the end of McCullough Drive. Peyton was reappointed to the planning commission to serve under the term. I think we just missed that when we went through the ones previously. They denied the waiver of street improvements for the, uh, trailer place at, on forty-eight seventy-six North Thompson. They approved the recommended waivers of sidewalks for twenty-six fifty-seven North Fifty-sixth Street and eighty-two forty-six Wagon Wheel Road. Heath Ward is appointed to serve on the Northwest Arkansas Conservation Authority, replacing Chris Weiser. They approved an amendment to the Drainage Criteria Manual Act to add low impact development design guide. They approved the execution of a contract to move forward with the, uh, regional detention project that's on the airport property, which is very important for downtown Springdale's development. And they approved the, uh, execution of contract for traffic signals to be installed at the extension of Ford Avenue at Butterfield Coach Road, which we've all talked about the need for a signal at that location that was approved as well. The next worst session will be June the fifteenth. We need to continue work on the land use plan and recommend everybody be here if at all possible, because we're getting a little bit behind.
Definitely.
And that's all I have.
Congrats Peyton on, uh, extension. Please with the, the group that we do have here. Anything else?
I will not be here at the July, um, session, and Roy will, uh, be, uh, filling in in my spots on that one. So you might look ahead, anyone with that being, um, Fourth of July weekend, if there's any conflicts, uh, let the office know, uh, if you won't be here.
After the holidays, so maybe that helps.
All right, meeting adjourned, thank you.
Okay.